Hello everyone and welcome to Clarksville's Political Forum. I'm Van Stokes, your moderator for today's session. And on behalf of Leadership Clarksville and the Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce, we're glad you could be with us today. This forum is coming to you from the facilities of the Mass Communications Department here on the campus of Austin Peay State University. And it's intended for you, the viewers at home, the voters, to have an informed choice when you go to the polls to vote. Today, we're going to have the opportunity to meet and greet the candidates who will be on the ballot for County Commission, County Commission District Number Three. They are, to my left, Mr. Greg Gilman, Mr. Scott Comparry, Mr. Ed Baggett, and Mr. Lane Giebers. Now, in a moment, each candidate will have two minutes in which to present opening comments. Following opening remarks today, we will then turn to our panelists for questions. Joining us once again, to my right, are our panelists, Mr. Jimmy Settle, Mr. Lee Erwin, and Mr. Jay Alberta. Now, each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question in a rotating order. At the conclusion of the questioning today, each candidate will then have two minutes in which to present a closing statement. Closing statements will be presented in reverse order from the opening statements today. Our timekeeper for this session is Ms. Lacy Groves. County Commissioners are voted into office for four-year terms, and they are elected by voters in their respective districts. The County Commission meets twice monthly to discuss and vote on a variety of resolutions including county government policy, county budget school system, school system budget, property tax rates, and other issues. County Commissioners also serve on various committees which are devoted to specific departments or subject areas, and they range from county jail to animal control and many other committees as well. Well, let's go to our candidates now for opening comments. First, we will hear from Mr. Greg Gilman.
Good morning, thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce and Austin Peay State University for hosting this event and allowing the voters to get to know the candidates and specifically myself. My name's Greg Gilman. I've lived in Clarksville, Tennessee, in the Montgomery County area for over 26 years. I have recently retired from the Army, and I've decided to take some time to give back to the community and try to help with some of the major issues in the Montgomery County area. I feel that the number-one reason for my running is to make sure that there's a good stewardship of the taxpayers' money. Currently, there's quite a bit of spending going on, and I'm not sure the priorities are in line with the way they need to be. The number-one reason is infrastructure. I think the infrastructure is not gaining pace with the rate of growth here in the county. The next thing is the services commensurate with the amount of money that the tax base draws in. As you get further out in the county, we have a volunteer fire service where numerous subdivisions are growing at a rapid pace, which may require full-time fire service. Needs to be something to look at. There's several projects going on in Clarksville right now in Montgomery County that the county has spent money on that I feel could be said is a waste. In the future, I need to help direct these projects in a priority and work with state legislatures who will work with the federal legislatures to get the money that we need here in Clarksville to expand the infrastructure and make sure that our money is spent properly and Clarksville grows the way it should, commensurate with the population growth that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will have opening comments from Mr. Scott Comparry.
I'm Scott Comparry. I live in the Sangioary District Three. I live on Grattan Road. My wife, Leigh Anne, and two kids, Riley and Matthew, they both go to the East Montgomery School. Been here all my life. Family farm located on McAdoo Creek. I want to bring good stewardship to the office of the County Commission. I feel like we raised, we hit a heck of an increase after last election, the following year, 26 cents increase. I think that was astronomical to have, and I think we need to be good stewards for the people and do what the people want, and that's all I want to do for Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Comparry. Next, we'll have opening comments provided by Mr. Ed Baggett.
Good morning. And I too would like to thank the Chamber for putting this on and the panel for the questions that we're fixing to ask or answer. My name is Ed Baggett. I live in District Three. I am currently the Commissioner of District Three, been serving for 12 years. I'm married to Cindy Albright Baggett. We have two wonderful children. We all attend Forest Street Ninety Methodist Church, and we're lifelong residents of Montgomery County. Been living in District Three for about 35 years. Been married for about 37 years. My son is Josh Baggett, 32 years of age, works at CMC and also on the school board. Our daughter is 22 years old, Ms. Peyton. She is attending Austin Peay State University here, and will be graduating May the 9th here in a couple of weeks, so we're very proud and excited for that. In serving on the Commission for the past 12 years, it's been an exciting 12 years. Some ups and downs, but I think we're progressing, moving in the right direction, and I want to work the next four years and continue that. Also, I'm a volunteer at East Montgomery Volunteer Fire Service. I have been for 28 years, 23 of those years serving as District Chief there. Now, I'm the Deputy Chief of the Ho County Fire Service, also involved with Relay for Life, Habitat for Humanity, and several more. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baggett. Next, we will hear from Mr. Lane Giebers.
I want to, again, thank everybody for the opportunity to be here. I've been in the Clarksville, Montgomery County area, have lived in the same area, same house for the last 15-plus years, and see a lot of changes in the southeast corner of Montgomery County. And that's kind of the reason I want to get involved. And I guess what I look at, it's not just one individual that's going to make a change on this, it is a team effort. And the team effort is all the Commissioners on the Board, along with everybody that is part of that. And it's just like any other business, the business takes all efforts, all different people, to make sure that it runs smoothly and that it can grow, but also be prosperous. And that's basically what the county is, is the business is taking care of the people. We want to make sure that we have their wants, their needs, and get their information and get it passed on so we can actually do what they need to do, and do it in some, in a way that not only are we taking care of today, but what's it look like for our children later? And watch what we're doing on our growth. And make sure that it does fit the budget and fit the needs, what everybody needs where we're area, because our area is kind of a mixed area of what we have for rural and for subdivisions. Again, I want to, again, appreciate being here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Giebers. That concludes our opening comments by our candidates for County Commission District Number Three. We will now turn to our distinguished panel. We will begin with Jimmy Settle. And Mr. Settle, if you will address your first question to Mr. Gilman for the first response, and then each candidate thereafter, we'll also have one minute to respond to the same question.
Thank you. Mr. Gilman, please pinpoint and describe those aspects of your professional and civic leadership that you feel uniquely qualify you for service on the Montgomery County Commission.
Well, serving in the military for 26 years, and then working at Fort Campbell now in high-level positions, working with various government bureaucracies all the way to the federal level. I've learned how to navigate the system and work with different leaders throughout the country in the process to ensure that the right questions are getting asked and that the right issues are being pushed up the line so that we can get response to those issues. I think we have a lot of things around here in Clarksville and Montgomery County, infrastructure-wise, that could be helped out, bringing money into the county that's currently not asked for. I do have some civic duty in that I'm a Reserve Deputy Sheriff with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, so I'm starting to learn what the different aspects of the county look like and what their needs are, because I'm all over the county most of the time when I'm patrolling.
Thank you very much. Mr. Comparry?
What qualifies me is that I've been a lifelong resident and I've lived in District Three since I've been married for the past 20 years. Grew up in town. My grandmother would have, if she'd had a stoplight at the end of McAdoo Creek at Nashville Highway, she probably could have continued driving five more years, but she didn't. She had a wreck there, as we've had many. I volunteered on the East Montgomery Volunteer Fire Department over four years ago. It was a great experience. I got to know a lot of people, a lot of concerns about, you know, about their homes and stuff, and I've given a lot of people rest, peace of mind on some things from time to time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Baggett?
Yes, I too serve on a lot of civic organizations. Of course, the one big one is the East Montgomery Volunteer Fire Service, which I spoke before. I've spent about 28 years on, serving as District Chief, seeing it grow from about 1,500 letters that we used to mail out when we first started to now over 5,000 that we cover in that area. It is a very large, fast-growing area, but I do feel like I have the experience that it takes and the needs to see it go forward and to manage, manage the growth. Of course, District Three, like I said, we're growing at a fast pace. The Five Lane is really going to help us on 418 South, along with the light there at McAdoo and 41. We've been working on the light for the past about six or seven years, and we're finally going to get it with the new construction. Thank you.
Mr. Giebers?
My background's basically been 40, right at 40 years in the business industry and been involved in a lot of other community aspects before I was here. This time here, it's been mostly building the business, and our business has been, you know, where we solve problems and for our customers and making sure that they're taken care of. It's really the same end of it. The county residents are our customers. We need to make sure they have what they need and that they are taken care of. We also need to make sure, and we can make sure we can make that work on budget. So it's a system of making this work as a business and being a steward of that, those funds, and making sure we're meeting their needs.
All right, thank you very much. Our next question will come from Mr. Lee Erwin, and it will go for the first response from Mr. Scott Comparry.
Thank you. Mr. Comparry, tell me, what do you feel is one of the top issues facing our county, and how would you propose to deal with that issue?
Well, the top issues for the Commissioner's seat usually residing in zoning and stuff and how it affects people and, you know, like you have, people want to start up a business that's close to residential area, how will that affect it? And, you know, to me, it's just listen to the people, what they want, you know, and what they tell me they want and what affects them.
Mr. Baggett?
Yes, I think one of our top ones is, of course, growth. Growth is the, what we're always looking at, and with growth, of course, we have to have new schools. Anytime you have growth, of course, your population grows. We've got an overcrowding at Rossview Elementary right now. We're looking at building a new school out in Oakwood. And managing that, we're staying with the ballgame on the growth. We do have a lot of portables right now at Rossview, which we do not like having, and that's what we're trying to resolve. And we're doing that, hopefully, in this next year, we'll have another school in process. Of course, infrastructure is a big one. A lot of the infrastructure, though, comes through the state, and you have to work with the state to get those in place. Thank you.
Mr. Giebers?
Well, just like they pinpointed, it's growth, and, you know, it depends on which side of the fence you're on, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. You know, most people on our area, that live in our area, when I talk to them, they live in that area because that's the type of community they want to be in. They want to be just a little bit away, but close enough, you know, to the city. And there's a lot of changes going on that end of it. And as, you know, and as they said, is as we go along and the population increases, schools, roads, fires, police protection, all that needs to go into place, and how do we do that systematically and make sure that not only we solving the problems today, but let's make sure that we're planning for what's going to be down the road.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Gilman?
Yes, growth is the big issue, but it's how you balance the growth and the money spent on the priority. We build a lot of schools, and there's clearly a need for schools, but sometimes we need to think about building up instead of out. We also need to look at the population growth. If you look at what latest study on the census or in the news, you would find that we were second or fifth in the nation in growth. We have to build the infrastructure for tomorrow and not just today. Clarksville and Montgomery County has been playing catch-up for years. We need a County Commission that can work with people like Curtis Johnson in the state to get these infrastructure projects going, because the state can't know every issue in every county without somebody telling them. And then they too need to work in conjunction with Marsha Blackburn to get federal money to fix these infrastructures like the bridge over 374 and so on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jay Alberta, you have the next question, and it goes to Mr. Ed Baggett.
Mr. Baggett, you and the rest of the Kansats have talked about the top issues that our county faces. What specific issues need to be addressed in your own district, and what are your plans to resolve those issues?
Well, the top issues in our district, Jay, of course, are basically the same as it has been in quite some time. Of course, the growth in that area, but rezoning. Rezoning cases are a big topic and always a hot topic in District Three. But my door is always open. We always work with the individuals that it's affecting directly and try to pick out the correct zoning for that piece of property. You can't always make everybody happy, but we certainly try, and we get 100% in that. But that's, that's the, and placing growth, commercial within residential, has always been an issue of mine, and we try to really work hard on that to make sure we're consistent with it. Thank you.
Mr. Giebers?
Just as they meant, you know, we keep going back to the same thing. It's a growth issue. And the growth is, what is the mixed use of what's going on with this structure? And where does the infrastructure meet? Because if we have some commercial buildings, what's the traffic load? What is that, you know, what's it put on to those areas? And for the safety of people being able to move around those areas, you know, to get to the schools and that, because we are, you know, really overloading certain sections of that road. And that's where to look at the zoning, do as Mr. Baggett said, to actually listen to the people and try to make it work and plan together with everybody to make sure that it works.
Mr. Gilman, you have the third response to this question.
Yes, the growth is true. One thing about District Three is it's one of the largest land masses in the district and the county. First and foremost is the safety and the well-being of the residents of District Three. We're seeing numerous subdivisions pop up. You have to go a long distance to get to the end of the county. They need to ensure that they get proper fire service or fire response, ambulance, and law enforcement. There are only a few deputies working, very few districts, or excuse me, County Commission districts throughout the county, and the response can take a while. Also, the volunteer fire department can take a while to get, they do a great job, there's no question, but I think it's time to look at some permanent manned fire stations in that area. The growth is commensurate to warranting that, and that's something that needs to be looked at.
Thank you very much. Mr. Comparry, you have the final response.
Well, the fire department out of District Three, as you all know I've served on and everything, I'm going to tell you, I think they're a very efficient bunch of guys out there. As far as the growth problem that we have, I think instead of building new schools, I think we need to utilize the property space around. If we build a new school, we need to go up and not out, all on one level, you know, multi-level schools. And I think we all look at the cost-effectiveness of remodeling some to save tax dollars and not have to propose to build a huge school and have a 26 cent tax increase again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go back to our panelists for another round of questions. Mr. Jimmy Settle, you have the next question, and it goes to Mr. Giebers.
Mr. Giebers, I just heard Mr. Comparry talk a little bit about expanding schools rather than building new schools, and that's a theme that I do hear from time to time at the courthouse. I'd like to hear all of you talk about that, that whole theory of, you know, we're confronted with building new schools at a rapid pace to curb the overcrowding. What is your stance on expanding the schools we've already got versus building more schools? We're about to build our 24th elementary school in this community. Please explain your thoughts on that.
Well, it's always nice to have the schools placed where they're in a close vicinity, especially on the elementary end of it, because it seems like that's where a lot of the kids aren't bused. It's more of a transportation issue, so that's one thing to look at. Back to the same thing, if we're expanding the schools, what are we doing to the roads and the traffic issues on that? The other thing to think about, and it's been a big issue in the last year, has been the safety issues of, you know, how do we protect our schools and our children inside those schools? And if we're doing additions, we got to look at how does that affect all of it, because there is some things going on and changes in some of the schools to be able to monitor who's coming and going and make sure we control what's happening. The other thing is that, same thing with schools, it's one thing to put a building up or remodel it, but we also got to take care of that building. What's the maintenance issue, and what does it cost to actually operate that building while it's going on? So all that's got to be looked at too. So it's got to be a judgment call on a per basis, per-school basis, I would think, to look at what are the costs going to be and what is it going to cost to make sure that we have the safety around that building too.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gilman, you have the next response.
Yes, the schools are very important. Our district is doing very well with the schools. However, when it comes to giving money to the school system, we can't really tell them how to spend their money when they come in for the budget. I guess there can be certain monies directed towards certain things, but overall, the school determines how they're going to spend their money internally. And I think we need to look at the growth of administration throughout the years and the per-student spending, and make sure that we're still spending the right amount of money to get the number of schools that we need. We definitely need to build up instead of out. In the future, schools that are planned, they need to plan on at least a 30 to 40% larger school in anticipation of growth, based on the growth that we've had over the years and the census and everything we're hearing, the new businesses coming in. This isn't going to stop, so we've got to solve this issue and make sure it fits within the budget.
Mr. Comparry?
I agree with, if we build one, we should have 30% extra myself. But what I want to do is I want to look at the schools on how we can remodel, if we could take maybe the cafeteria, make classrooms, and add a new cafeteria, gymnasium to the outside, the ones that have things. I think that'd be a lot less cost than than building a whole new school and having another property tax increase for the schools, in name of the schools.
Mr. Baggett, you have the last response to this question.
Thank you, and that is a good question. Actually, it come up this past month when we were discussing the new school on Oakland Road. The last four, including the new one that's going to be built, has been built with the availability of building on to. The core part of the building is already there, so we'll be able to add classrooms only. So the next time we need an addition in elementary schools, we can do the expansion on the schools instead of going back and building a school. This is a very good question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you've just joined us, you are watching Clarksville's Political Forum. We are meeting with candidates on the ballot for County Commission District Number Three. Once again, they are, to my left, Mr. Greg Gilman, Mr. Scott Comparry, Mr. Ed Baggett, and Mr. Lane Giebers. Let's go back to our panelists. Mr. Lee Erwin, you have the next question. It goes to Mr. Gilman.
Thank you. Mr. Gilman, let's talk about keeping up with your, keeping in touch with your constituents for a moment. How do you propose to stay connected with the residents of the district, District Three, to increase their involvement in, say, planning for the county's future?
Well, I plan to run my own website that they'll have access to. Also, my phone number will be published, and they'll have access to me 24/7. I plan on spending a little time in the district, driving around, talking to the different residents, seeing what their issues are, try to be active at as many forums as these that I can, and just overall increase the transparency of the County Commission, especially in our district, as well as making my access to those residents very easy. Again, being a Reserve Deputy, I do get around the area. I do get to see the different issues, and I can bring those back and relay those to the residents of my district when it's necessary. Thank you.
Mr. Comparry?
Well, I, let's question again, I've lost the conversation.
Talking about the constituents in the third district, how do you propose to sort of stay connected with the residents of the district and increase their involvement, say, in the planning for Montgomery County's future?
Quarterly community meetings. It's what I would plan to do. You know, utilize one of the churches locally and just do a thing in the papers, tell them that we're having a community meeting and like to talk to you about what's going on in District Three and what things, what problems that people face in a more comfortable environment. Thank you.
Mr. Baggett?
Yes, of course, my door is always open. My phone number is listed on the web. There's about six different ways they can contact me, email, they can text me. Of course, sometimes email's a little tricky, but I think we've got that worked out. I'm always available 24/7, and you need to go more with email and texting and telephone because nowadays, people are so busy with their children and everything, it's hard to have meetings every month or every three months to where everybody can come. But you need to make yourself accessible to them, and I do, and I'm very proud of that. I field probably anywhere from 50 to 75 calls a month from the constituents in District Three. So I do stay in touch, and also being a volunteer firefighter, being out in the community quite a bit, it gives me the chance to mix and get comments and questions.
Mr. Giebers?
Well, we live in the information technology, you know, today, there's several ways to communicate, hundreds of ways to communicate, which doesn't always mean we always talk or understand. So that's part of it, is actually taking the time to make sure that we understand what people are trying to tell us and we can actually respond to what's going on. Setting up websites, and basically, the whole end of it is immersing yourself into that community and more involvement with any activity that's going on, so you understand how these people live and how they need to live and what their wants are.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jay Alberta, you have the next question. It goes to Mr. Comparry.
Mr. Comparry, we just recently, as a community, have been designated one of the 10 best places to retire in the country. Do you think our county is offering adequate services for those retirees? And if not, what additional services do you see the county providing for them?
Well, adding additional services for people, it costs money. You know, my main objective is to keep our tax dollars down and stuff locally. As far as, you know, I think we've gone in a good direction with the business parks and stuff and new industry coming in and stuff and job growth. So, you know, I'd like to stay on that track, keeping jobs available, because a lot of the retirees, they still, they still tend to want to work afterwards, because the army people that I've made are pretty, they get bored sitting at home.
Mr. Baggett?
Thank you, Jay. Yeah, I too. I think, obviously, we're doing a good job of providing for the retirement because they keep coming. We see a large growth in our retirement, people retiring here in Clarksville, Montgomery County, and that's great. That's exciting. I think we also see a large growth in the young people, so we got a good mix variety. Are we providing all the services they need? Probably not, but I think we do an adequate job of it.
Mr. Giebers?
Well, talking to the different people in our different district and actually through the counties and close to our counties is, the retirees are moving here for a lot of different reasons, and obviously, we've put a lot of things in place to make that happen and why it's attractive to them. And, you know, people I talk to are not just coming from the north to move to someplace warmer, it's moving from the south this way, but also, as we see, is a lot of them are following their kids anymore. You know, they're actually retiring, and they're moving to where their business and where their structure is, and they can be close to the families. So which, you know, back to the same thing, what we talked about before, how do we control all this, and that's the services they need too.
Mr. Gilman?
I think Montgomery County and Clarksville doing a great job offering these opportunities to retirees. I think the health community is growing here. There's clinics being built every day. There's clinics being built every day. We have access to all the services necessary for a retiree. We're close to Nashville, got lots of recreation. We are close to Hopkinsville, to the lakes. I think what the Development Council is working with Nashville to increase our friendship and working relationship with them, about the only thing we need to do is provide more access of transportation between here and Nashville for those retirees that can't drive and need to get down there. But the cost of living is great. I think the current tax base is adequate, doesn't really need to be increased. And last thing is, for the older folks here in town, we need to freeze, make sure that we freeze their tax rate for their residences so they don't get harmed that way.
Thank you very much. We've got time for two more rounds of questions from our panelists before we go to our closing comments. We'll take the next question from Mr. Jimmy Settle, and it will go to Mr. Ed Baggett for the first response.
Thank you. Mr. Baggett, matching funding to where it's most needed is always a big issue at all levels of government, as you know. And in your opinion, are the county departments adequately funded? And if not, what are the needs that are not being addressed?
Are they adequate funded? Yes and no. They are, we're managing and keeping all of our services going. Can they be better? Yes. We need more patrols on the road, and as spoke before, we need a fire service, we need to do something with it. There's been talk in the past, I've talked with the mayor and several about the fire department, possibly starting out just hiring a day shift crew for the volunteer fire departments out in the county to make sure we got 24-hour coverage. That's hard to do with volunteers, even though we have 230 volunteers, which is great, but we still need to do a better job of that. So yeah, we've still got stuff to work on, but yes, I think we're doing a good job.
Mr. Gebers?
Just as Mr. Baggett said, is it adequately funded? Depends probably who you talk to in the department and what their needs are. Technology's, you know, changing all the time, you know, we need to embrace that, bring that into all aspects of it, which is usually a cost reducer in the long run. So what is the upfront cost compared to what it's going to take to fit these needs? Overall, we're doing a great job of what's going on. It's just polishing and making it better, you know, for how the changes are coming to meet the growth that's happening.
Mr. Gilman?
Yes. The, repeat the question again, please.
Well, the essence of the question is basically, in your opinion, are the county departments adequately funded? And if not, what are the needs that are not really being addressed at this point?
They're adequately funded by the county commission and the budget committee. However, the departments are going to have to, within their self, figure out how to best spend the money and be most efficient with that money. You just can't keep throwing money at every department and expect it to keep up with the growth pace unless they reorganize themselves somewhat. That's a natural flow of bureaucracy, is to grow and administration to grow, and with that, it takes more money. So if there was some way we could line item, budget items to these departments, that we could ensure that the money's being spent properly and that they're a better steward of the money that they get.
Mr. Comprary?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. I've noticed a lot of construction going on down by the public library, restructuring the parking lot and stuff like that, a lot of beautification and stuff like that. But, you know, to me, I didn't really see it was needed to sit here and put the curbs in and do all the fancy landscaping and stuff like that. I mean, sure, it looks beautiful and stuff, but that's our tax dollars being spent. I'd like to know why they were overbudgeted, maybe for who was in charge of that or who wasn't, or maybe it was a government grant. Government grants still aren't free, you know, they're still tax-paying dollars. I guess we should take advantage of it if we can, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lee Erwin, you have the last question, and it goes to Mr. Lane Gebers for the first response.
All right. Mr. Gebers, we've talked a lot of Mr. Alberti. I had a question a moment ago about people retiring, and we've talked about growth, people moving to our community. Name one or two quality of life issues that you feel Montgomery County could do a better job of providing for its citizens.
I guess one of the things I hear, talking to people in our district, it goes right back to the roads, you know, having adequate stoplights, where the funding's coming from on that end of it. You know, we're in the county compared to the city, but it is a team effort to make sure that it's all working together. That's one of the biggest things that I hear, services being provided to them because they feel like they're out in the rural area. You know, so what can we do to help those people that feel like they're out on the edge and make sure they're all part of our community?
Mr. Gilman?
Yes, I too believe that. The number one issue, I think, is to make sure that the transportation for these retired citizens to get back and forth to the city is a priority. The infrastructure is certainly a priority, and it goes back to the squeaky wheel gets the grease. It took six years to get a stop, well, probably more than six years to get a stoplight at Sangio Road in '76. And if you ask any of the residents that live there if they needed a stoplight, I think you could have got that answer out about 99% of them. But for some reason, we had to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars throughout us and the state to ensure a light got there. When it finally did, the whole problem was solved. But it was way too long, and it was way too much effort to try to put into it to get it done when it should have been very simple.
Mr. Comprary?
Repeat the question.
Yes, we're talking about growth in the community and people retiring, but name one or two quality of life issues that you feel Montgomery County could do a better job of providing its citizens.
Maybe EMS could have a cut rate for people that have to use ambulance service to take them to the doctor, you know? I think that would be a good, a good place to start and stuff for the people that didn't have the adequate insurances or what have you. That would be the best for the county, to me.
And Mr. Baggett?
I think one of the things that I would touch on would be public safety, of course. Our citizens all need to be taken care of, whether it's EMS, fire, or sheriff patrol. Those are some of the key things that we're looking at this year in the budget, as we go into the budget process in the county. And there are some big issues, and I think that's something we can do better at and we need to do better at. Thank you.
I want to say thank you all very much. We've heard a lot of issues from our panelists, addressed to our candidates here for County Commission District Number Three, ranging from zoning to growth, safety, expanding schools, building schools, quality of life, staying connected, and also helping your constituents to be involved as well. We now go to our closing comments. They will come in reverse order. From our opening comments, we will hear first from Mr. Lane Gebers.
Thank you. A good friend of mine, that's actually owns several businesses here in town, always told me that he would never vote for somebody that hadn't made payroll. And I got to thinking about that, and there's a lot to that, because you need to be out in the real life and know, because the people that are actually doing that are providing a quality of life already for all their employees, their children, and know what they need. The other thing they're also, we're used to working on is budgets. What does it take to make that business successful and make it work? And so there's a lot of things that basically work, like I said, because it's the business of the government to make sure that it's operating correctly and it goes hand-in-hand with what's going on with the business. So like I said, it's a team effort. The people out there, you have a tough decision to make. It's not just one individual. You're picking a team of people to make sure this county works, and I'm going to do everything I can to listen and implement what you need to do and what your wants, needs, and to make sure that it comes in and it can be heard, and what we can do to make sure this whole county works the way it needs to. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear next closing comments from Mr. Ed Baggett.
Thank you. Again, thanks to the chamber and the panel. First, let me say that it has been an honor serving as Commissioner of District Three of Montgomery County. I've been proud of the hard work that I've done for District Three and being a part of it. I'm also proud of being able to listen to the candidates and try to respond back to them and resolve issues that they have. I'm also willing to serve the constituents of District Three at any time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I too have been in business, I too have prepared budgets, I have owned my own business, I've worked in the private sector, I've also worked with the volunteer fire department on budgets. Budgets are hard to deal with, but I have the ability and capability of doing that. I have the experience. I've served on the budget committee, fire service committee, nominating committee, ag committee, by county, solid waste committee, and so forth. But I greatly appreciate on August the 7th that each and every one of you get out and vote, whether you vote for me or the other three candidates. We need to hear your voice, and we need your vote. I would appreciate your vote on August the 7th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Closing comments next will come from Mr. Scott Comprary.
Thank you, and I appreciate the chamber for having me here today. I'd like to say, I want to earn your vote. I want to be a good steward of your tax dollars. I don't want to, it seems like every year after election is over with, the election year, we never have an increase that year, but we have it every other year but the year after. And I'd like to just be a good steward for you. And I propose, I'm not going to vote for a tax increase because I think we've been increased for the past 10. Thank you, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. And then closing comments from Mr. Greg Gilman.
Thank you again for inviting me. I didn't bring up the parking lot, but it was brought up, and I think it pretty much stands for everything that's going on in the administration today. We didn't need that parking lot at Veterans Plaza. It cost a lot of money. I was just down there last week at the election commission. It's one-way in, one-way out, one-way traffic, and when early voting happens, it is going to be a nightmare. And I want all the voters to remember that when they go in there to early vote. It should have never passed, and we shouldn't have done it. It should have been repaved, and that was it. It was a poor use of money. I think we need to look at getting internet as far out into the county and the rural areas we can. These people and their families, farmers have to use the internet now, grandparents use Facebook. I know it sounds funny, but that's just the way it is. 50 and older are using Facebook more than anybody to communicate. These people are paying exorbitant prices for satellite internet, even if they can get it. We need to hold these companies, Charter, Comcast, AT&amp;T, and everybody to find out what they're doing and to get these services out here, just like it was electricity 100 years ago. It needs to be now. I will be the best steward of money for this county. I haven't been connected to anybody here, and I spend the money when I vote on these budgetary constraints and budgetary approvals like it will be my own money, and I realize that those are hard-earned dollars. And if you vote for me, I will be accessible 24/7, and I will ensure that your money is spent well, that you pay for taxes. Thank you.
And thank you all very much. I want to say thanks to each of our candidates for sharing your time and your thoughts with us today here in this political forum. But more than that, I want to say thank you to each one of you for being willing to serve this community if elected to this position. I want to say thank you also to our panelists today. Gentlemen, once again, thank you very, very much. And to Lacy Groves, our timekeeper for today, thank you very much. To those that are watching at home, don't forget, voting day is August the 7th. Now, you can early vote from July the 18th through August the 2nd, but the state primary and county general elections will be held on August the 7th. If you have questions or if you wish to participate in early voting, you can do that through the Montgomery County Election Commission. They're located at Montgomery Veterans Plaza at 350 Pageant Lane. Once again, thanks to the Mass Communications Department here at Austin State University for broadcasting this event, and thanks also to your Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce and Leadership Clarksville for making this forum possible. Until next time, I'm Van Stokes. Thank you for watching.